We're going to be persevering on this tonight. Until I get home, I'm going to look at this again.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular board meeting of March 11th, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order and let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our roll call, our board members are present. Before we go on to the open forum, I'm going to ask the board to observe a moment of silence for two of our board members who lost parents in the last couple of weeks and are here today. Thank you very much for that. We're going to go on with open forum. And the first person on the open forum is Ellen Fahey. And you were going to be talking about concerned about EMFs and wireless radiation?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Do I need to do anything with the microphone or?
No, just be speaking to it. Thank you.
I'll say?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Ellen Fahey. I have the privilege of being a sped para at Jeffers Pond Elementary. I love my job and I love the kids. I'm here because I sense in our school environment an invisible danger which on a daily basis threatens the health and well-being of our students and it terrifies me. So it's time for me to speak up. Have you heard of the phrase wireless is the new cigarette? You see decades ago smokers were unaware of the dangers of tobacco. They could see the smoke, but they could not feel the damage they were doing to their lungs. Well, it's happening again. Except this time, we can't even see the smoke, so to speak. As Wi-Fi users, we can't see or feel the powerful yet invisible waves of radiation that attack our bodies at a cellular level. So how do we make the invisible visible? Please picture with me a person putting raw hamburger into a microwave oven. We can't see the waves of radiation, but we can see the hamburger cook. The appliance uses 3.4 gigahertz of radiation to heat the water molecules inside the hamburger. Now picture a child holding a 5G cellphone to the head. This device uses 4.4 gigahertz to transmit a call. Make no mistake, the radiation does not go around the skull, but it goes through. Those waves do interact and interfere with the biological processes in their brains and bodies. But it's more than cellphones. It's everywhere, at school, it's smart boards, banks of iPads next to their classroom wall, copiers the size of Zambonis. At home, the routers, smart appliances. Our kids, night and day, are swimming in a sea of toxic waves and they are drowning. While we go on our merry way and nothing to see here, but I do see and it's killing me because I see in all the classrooms, kids being wifi-ed, needlessly suffering, uncontrollable impulsive behaviors, neuropathy at a very young age, skin conditions, compromised immune systems, fatigue and poor concentration. I have handouts here on that. It's time we acknowledge and investigate the danger of this wolf in sheep's clothing. I'm not saying we should eradicate Wi-Fi, although the countries of France and Italy have had the courage to ban it in their schools. But maybe we can have our cake and eat it too. We need to work together finding ways to mitigate the harms, ways to defend our kids from this disembodied danger. At home and school, we all enjoy the great entertainment and incredible conveniences Wi-Fi offers, but now it's time to stop and think about how we are paying for these luxuries with our children's health. It's time to put our kids first. I have some handouts over here. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Okay, next on the agenda is Rosalie Johnson with the CPM curriculum.
Good evening and thank you for letting me have this opportunity to speak. I would like you to think, all to think back when you were in middle school and ask yourself what, what it was like when you worked in groups. Now imagine that being your math class every single day. Let me tell you what we do. We talk. We talk about friends, family, boys, phones, pretty much everything except math. I'm in the seventh grade CPM math class. One problem with this class is that the homework is graded on completion, not correctness. So when we get tested on the material, many of my classmates and I receive a failing or almost failing grade. We are taught new material by other students, not given feedback on assignments and expected to pass. I have a problem with this, which is why I find it surprising that at a recent meeting discussing the new CPM curriculum, it received nothing but praise. My math teacher asked my class if we enjoyed this math and not one of my classmates said they liked this curriculum. I have been taught in this increasingly divided world, it is more important than ever to listen to the opinions of others, even if we disagree with them. Listening to the opposing views let us gain insights and understanding into why people think the way they do. This in turn enables us to have more meaningful conversations that allow us to reach a better shared understanding. If you believe this, you need to talk to the students, parents and teachers more about this math course and bring those who do not like this curriculum to speak without retribution. Math has never come easy to me, but I have always enjoyed it and I have enjoyed the satisfaction of a good grade because I worked hard for it. My classmates and I have many more problems with this curriculum and we would be happy to tell you all about them. We just need you all to promise to listen. Thank you.
Next is Phoebe Madison and Minzna, and that's the CPM math curriculum.
Hi, my name is Phoebe and today I would like to share my concerns on the CPM math curriculum. Since the beginning of the school year, my classmates and I are really confused and we're struggling with this new curriculum. We had trouble adjusting to switching seats every day. We get into our class, sit in our home groups, and then two minutes later, we move to our new groups, which are with new people in new tables. And then we move to our whiteboards and do math problems on them and then we move back to our tables. I feel like this is a lot of unnecessary extra work and it causes a lot of, it causes us to lose our focus and our concentration. Another thing is the homework. We've been used to learning a topic and writing notes about it and then we do homework about it afterwards. Now we learn about something and we get homework that's completely not related to what we've just learned. Sometimes we even get questions on math that, that's from seventh grade. Our teacher told us that the point of this is not to do that perfectly on the test during the year, but so that we can do good on the final test, which is not my goal because I would like to have a good grade in math throughout the whole year. In eighth grade, we have two teachers, one that's doing the new math curriculum and the other one that's not. I feel like our grade was split into two. One group is being tested with the new curriculum and the other one that isn't. The people who are in the new curriculum are really struggling compared to those who are not. And the people who are in the old curriculum are receiving better grades than those who are in the new one. Many students have raised this concern to our counselors and requested the counselors to switch to the old teachers and our counselors have let some people, but not others. In conclusion, I think when students would be successful doing this in high school, especially because that's when grades get serious. I feel like it's not helpful, but it's confusing and I used to do much better in math in the past years than I'm doing now. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Madison and I'm an eighth grader at Twin Oaks Middle School. I would like to address my concerns regarding the CPM math curriculum. I have been struggling with this math curriculum and new way of teaching. My grades have gone down tremendously more this year than they have in the past. I've been an honorable student and I'm now struggling to maintain that GPA because of this class. My love for math has disappeared after this curriculum. My sixth grade math teacher instilled a math confidence in me and taught me a way that did not make me dread going to class. But now it's hard to feel motivated by this math material and many of us have just given up and find it hard to keep trying every day. The randomly assigned groups every day gives me anxiety wondering who I will be partnering with for the day. This curriculum promotes teamwork, so when we have a question, we rely on our teammates. In theory, this is a great concept, but in reality, this approach is not working like it should. We don't want to discover math. We want to be taught math by our teacher and not by a peer who doesn't understand it as well. Another concern I have about this curriculum is working with another classmate on a team test. I might be able to get a really good score by myself, but it's not, or it is a team thing, so their score also counts as my score. It does not seem fair that when we are randomly paired with someone for a test and have to answer every other question, my grade is dependent on their work and understanding of the curriculum. This curriculum concerns me for high school because math gets harder as we get older and it actually has an impact on our future. Because I don't understand this curriculum, I'm worried I will fail in high school, which also stresses me out a lot. I've always wanted to pursue a degree in business and one day open up my own business. Because this career path is heavily reliant on strong math skills, I'm now questioning whether or not this is an option for my future. This math curriculum may seem like a fun or interesting experience for the teachers and directors who want to try something different, but for us students, we don't want to be used as guinea pigs when our futures are dependent on learning and knowing these fundamental basics of education. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my concerns.
Hello, my name is Minzna and I'm here to speak about the curriculum. I'm speaking to bring your attention to the challenges that students are facing with their new math curriculum, particularly when it comes to independent work. I would like to bring attention to our new math curriculum and its concerns. I haven't been doing as great in math like I was before. I would walk into class ready for math and now I dread going to class. I know many staff and teachers have tried to make this better for me and many other students, but it doesn't seem to work. I understand as educators, they constantly aim to enhance the learning experience for their students. It appears that the transition to this new curriculum has presented obstacles for the students. One main struggle that students encounter is the lack of guidance and support during the sessions. While the curriculum emphasizes self-direct learning, many students find themselves overwhelmed and unsure how to approach the material on their own. Furthermore, the pace at which the curriculum moves can be struggling for some students to keep up independently. Each lesson builds upon the previous one and students who fall behind find themselves feeling discouraged and disengaged from the learning process. Additionally, in class, we get put into random groups and rely on others for questions only a teacher can answer. Students often benefit from discussing concepts with their peers, sharing insights or working through problems together. However, this approach makes math very stressful, especially when you have people relying on you to know something you've never experienced before. Another part about the curriculum is that you cannot redo your math quizzes, also known as quick checks, and homework. This impacts students' grades so much and it's the main reason why people have low grades in math, because they can't learn from the mistakes that they have made on their homework and quizzes. In light of these challenges, I urge you to consider implementing strategies to address the needs of students navigating through the new math curriculum independently. This may include providing additional resources such as instructional videos or supplementary materials, offering more opportunities for one-on-one support or fostering a collaborative learning environment where students can seek assistance from their teachers. By acknowledging and addressing these challenges, we can ensure that students have all the support and resources they need to succeed in their mathematical journey.
Thank you. And last is Rachel Carlson, also speaking on CPM math.
I would like to begin by thanking Directors Olstad, Velazquez, Atkinson and Bullion for recognizing and prioritizing parent involvement when it comes to concerns with student discipline. These types of policy changes and partnerships will help improve our district and create a safer environment for all students and teachers. Please take the same approach when it comes to choosing curricula for our students and consult not only the teachers, but also our students and their parents. I'm here tonight to share some data that I found while researching the CPM math curriculum. These are all quotes that I was able to find by searching opinions of CPM. Number one, math has become harder subject for students since the introduction of CPM into NP3 math courses. Many teachers may argue that CPM benefits students as it prepares them for college. However, will it prepare us for college if students are completely clueless and simply do not understand the curriculum? CPM does not relate to what we are tested on since the tests are completely different than what, from what is in the book. Number two, picture yourself taking a group test with uneven groups, meaning that there might be a group with more determined or hardworking students and another with unfocused and struggling students. You are more likely going to receive a score you really don't deserve. Tests are meant to test an individual's skills, not a group of people. Number three, the group interactions principle is especially unrealistic because contrary to the CPM vision, many students simply don't have the motivation to enthusiastically discuss and work with their groupmates, who can all be confused over a concept and fail to help each other understand it. The enjoyment of learning process is as important as the result. CPM takes the joy out of learning and it is a very rigid and standardized, standardized way to ensure that everyone gets about the same fruits consisting mostly of test scores, regardless of their level of motivation. Number four, the program is counterintuitive. If your group doesn't know what they're doing, you will not know what you are doing. That group learning makes it much more difficult to understand concepts. This stems from accountability, which is neglected when you have the option to rely on your group. Number five, MathematicallyCorrect feels that these findings through preliminary, though preliminary, give sufficient cause to seriously question the efficacy of CPM. MathematicallyCorrect, this is the website, argues that such radical program changes should not be introduced without clear, well-documented overwhelmingly compelling quantitative data to support them. Mathematic achievement in America is far below what we would like it to be. Recent reform efforts only aggravate the problem. As a result, our children have less and less exposure to rigorous, content-rich mathematics. Concerned parents are in a state of dismay and have begun efforts to restore content, rigor and genuinely high expectations to mathematic education. This site provides relevant background and information for parents, teachers, board members and the public from around the country. Six, CPM is not a program that benefits students, especially ones like me who haven't been in the program for very long. It results in a lack of communication and more confusion. Dr. David Klein, a mathematics professor at California State University Northridge, has published a paper on his fear that CPM and programs like it make it hard for students to grasp intricate math concepts.
Excuse me? You are over time, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you very much and I just would like to ask if Dr. Zumbrush would mind providing an update of the community on the middle school fast bridge math results since it wasn't presented in that February 12th meeting? Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes open forum. I'd like to take a motion in a second on the approval of the agenda. Come in. By Director Crosby. Second. Second by Director Olstad. Okay, all in favor? Aye. That passes seven zero. Okay, we're moving on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or citizen so requests. And in which event, the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed under new business. So the consent agenda consists of financials, purchase orders above 25,000, the monthly financial report, approval of school board minutes, personnel items, resignations, terminations, non-renewals, leaves of absences, and that's it. So can I have a motion?
Come in.
Okay, so I've got Director Velazquez and Director Olstad. Any questions?
Yes, Chair Franz, I'd like to pull the purchase orders over 25,000 out for additional questions and clarification, please.
Okay, so we will be taking purchase orders above 25,000 and placing them under new business. Anything else? Okay, so I'm going to ask for a vote for the consent agenda for everything except for item B, purchase orders over, above 25,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes seven zero. Okay, moving on.
Chair Franz?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I'd like to just take a moment quickly to recognize the retirements that are on the list as well. Recognizing we have a long list of 12 individuals who are retiring from the district after many years of service in multiple positions, so just wanted to quickly give them a direct shout out for their years of service and dedication to the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next agenda item, the resolution for acceptance of gifts. This is a roll call vote and... Find our gifts in here? Where did it go? Here's the page open. Thank you. Okay, for the gifts for this one, we have the Prior Lake Lions Club for $3,225.80 and that is for two audio meter, audio meters for the Health Services Department and another gift for $2,000 from the Prior Lake Savage Optimist Club and that's for driver's education scholarships. Okay, so this is a roll call vote. Director Olstad?
Aye.
Director Crosby?
Aye.
Director Burnick?
Aye.
Director Bullion?
Aye.
Director Velazquez?
Aye.
And Director Atkinson?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes seven zero. And next we have Laker Pride and I'm going to hand this over to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Franz. This evening, we've got two points of pride that we'll highlight. The first one is our Five Hogs Tour Gardens. We have Emily Malone, Katie Sherman and Pat Tassi, if I said that correctly, sorry, Pat, here tonight. Students at Five Hogs Elementary have been growing their own food for two years now and they are responsible for the entire process of germinating, planting, watering and harvesting a variety of lettuce, which are then served on the lunch line to their peers in the cafeteria. And they repeat this process about four times a year. So these students are really gaining firsthand experience of what it means to grow the food that you eat, particularly of our salad bar. And so I'll turn it over to Emily to kind of walk us through or to Katie, I don't know which one of you might want to start?
Well, we thought the kids, because they're the experts.
Start. All right, let's have our youth farmers come forward and talk a little bit about the program.
Anybody want to say what's happening in that photo where you are in the kitchen with?
If they could come to the podium, that's where the microphone would be? Any brave soul?
We're here for it. We'll do it. Good job. So we'll do it, we'll put some pictures up there. These pictures here are just of everybody doing a couple of different things and then what it looked like when we served it on the line one time. And then this, yeah, you speak greatest.
So Quinn, what's happening in that photo?
So what's, what's happening is in that picture, we're just growing and putting the seeds into that pot and then after we put them in all of those little pockets, we put water in the sides and then we let them grow for a little. And then after you let them grow, you put them in one of those, you put each and every one in one of those pods and then you just kind of wait for them to grow.
And so on Tuesdays, you guys go down and what do you do on Tuesdays?
On Tuesdays, we...
Well, that would be Lucas?
Yeah, that would be Lucas.
What do you check on Tues, on, I think you actually do it Friday mornings, right?
Thursdays and Fridays.
Oh, Thursday and Friday, sorry.
We're going to get our days right.
Sasha's not here, but he normally doesn't with me. We go down and fill the H2O.
Right. Good job.
Check out the pH balance.
And they check the balance, the pH balance of the water?
On Friday morning, what do you ladies do?
We go and check the pH balance and if it needs to be lowered, we... Stuff.
Do you want to come explain it? Yeah, everybody would like to hear.
The HP or the pH, I don't know which one it is, but we usually, we check what the level is and how much nutrients is in the water. So if it's really high, then we lower it and if it's really low, we higher it, even though we haven't had any of those. But we drop, we take a sample of the water and there's this liquid we drop in and if it's more red, then it's low on nutrients. And if it's more darker green, then we put, then it's higher on nutrients and we have to lower it. And we usually put some down liquid in it and then we put it back into the tank and then we just wait for it to cycle through and then Pat, she checks the pH at the end of the day when everyone leaves the school and that's basically what we do on every Friday morning.
Good job. They use a lot of talk like nutrients. So we're growing with water, so we have to feed that water, so it's going to grow our plants. So because it's a hydroponic tank, we add nutrients like calcium and nitrogen and magnesium, all the things you actually find in dirt. So it's been so much fun to work with these guys and we're all learning how to be farmers because I'm not a farmer either. And working with the hydroponic tank especially because it's, it's challenging because we don't normally grow that way. But it's so much fun too to actually see our, our work. And then we get to harvest our work and then we actually get to eat it. And the taste of that lettuce that comes out of that hydroponic tank is amazing. It's so much better than anything you can get anywhere. So that's been really fun for the kids.
I just wanted to say that this was a grant that Pat actually wrote about three years ago, following, yeah, through Fork Farms. So this was all through a grant opportunity that our kids are getting to learn about this.
Yep, it was a Scott County statewide health improvement partnership grant, so we hope to get more grants and keep doing it at each site. And then I think we just have a list of all of our students. What do you guys think about the taste of the lettuce?
I don't like lettuce.
You didn't try it?
I tried.
Yeah? It's really good, isn't it? Well, you do a good job growing, even if you don't like to eat it. So, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
A question, I think, and then I'll do some certificates.
I was just curious with the lettuce that was on the, in the picture there, how long did that take to grow? Like how often do you cycle through the crop?
Yeah, so the kids come and plant the seeds, which take three to four days to actually germinate and by germinate just means it's starting to pop out of the seed. At that point, we take the tray of germinated plants and we put it under the grow light and so that can take a couple of weeks for them to actually get big enough to transplant into the actual tower. So the whole process can take four to six weeks, sometimes a little longer, just depending on how well our water is going to cooperate and, you know, all those growth things.
And while we're germinated, lots of seeds, they all haven't germinated, right?
No, just like farming, you know, sometimes that seed is just not going to sprout. So it gets a little frustrating, but we work right through it and we just plant some more.
You guys do that four times a year, four or five times a year?
Yeah, we did four last year. I was hoping to get a fifth in this year, so we'll see.
Yeah.
Great. And did you, did you say you would just use water or do you use? Oh, that's incredible.
Yep, it's water. So we have to, that's why we control the, add in the nutrients, but then we have to control the pH level, which is actually pretty high in Prior Lake. So we're working weekly to just keep that lowered and nice and steady so that'll give the plants what they need.
Wow, that's incredible.
Yeah.
You could come to buy a house.
Come on and grab a picture of all of you. Just want to stand up here.
Come on, kids.
Do you want us to name it?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
And then stand back here.
Oh, I see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have we got one more? So we also received... So, we also receive, we are recipients of a Prairie Care Center grant to implement calming corners, and I actually wrote about this last week in my Fridays Five, and tonight we're featuring Westwood Elementary School. So calming, we have Dr. Warner, her team are here tonight. Calm corners are implemented schoolwide at Westwood Elementary via a Prairie Care grant. The calm corners encourage students to explore, identify, and utilize healthy regulation strategies that work best for them when they are feeling stressed, upset, or distraught in class, and maybe off their instructional game, if you will, and it allows them to have more independent ability to kind of work through some of what they are going through. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the team to talk a little bit about how you're implementing the calming corners.
Hi, good evening. My name is Renee Evans, and I'm an occupational therapist for Westwood Elementary, Hamilton Ridge Elementary, and Laola Delago.
I'm Kirsten Cuddleson. I'm the school psychologist at Westwood and Hamilton Ridge.
And our other coworker who partnered with us on this grant is Dallas Giles. He's a school social worker at Westwood, and he couldn't be here with us tonight.
Yeah, so... And Dr. Warner, principal. Those guys all know her. Okay, so our grant was really targeting, like you said, the, we wanted to address the emotional well-being of our students, and we had a teacher who kind of had implemented this on her own in her classroom, and we thought it was really neat how it was working, so we wanted to pursue opportunities to expand this idea and then integrate it into our Westwood culture. So, yeah, so our project addresses those basic wellness of all the children at Westwood Elementary.
And to write this grant, we really explored the evidence that's out there, and the evidence indicates an increase in anxiety and emotional distress in our children, sometimes as young as five years old. The most recent Minnesota student survey gives us some self-reported concerns for our children that are very alarming and need immediate action. It is well documented how important the development of self-regulation strategies are for children to have academic, social, and emotional success.
So, we have some pictures. Yeah.
So, these are just a few of the items that we were able to purchase with the grant. We got...
We brought some samples. If you're feeling overwhelmed. This is a fan favorite right there.
So, we ordered some breathing boards, some books, some art supplies, a lot of visuals, breathing balls, timers, weighted gear, and then a little beanbag chair for comfort. These are some examples of how the teachers have set up their calming corner. We wanted them to be very similar so that students felt comfortable visiting them throughout the grade levels. So, from kindergarten through fifth grade, all teachers have the same supplies, roughly, and so children know that when they see the calm corner sign, they're invited to use that calm corner for emotional regulation. So, these are some of the, some of the ones around Westwood. Here's a few more.
Yeah, and then as part of some of our action steps, we've been getting information from the teachers on how they think it's going, and so we just wanted to share some of the teacher comments that we gathered. So, one teacher said that the kids are very excited to learn about the calm corner. They had great conversations about the purpose of the calm corner and how they could help themselves when they have big emotions. Everyone got a chance to practice, and since implementing our calm corner, it's been used consistently. In one instance, a student used the calm corner, came to me to see if he could use it again as he was not calm yet, used the corner again, and was able to rejoin our class for learning on the rug after. It is encouraging to see kids recognizing their feelings and using tools to help themselves regulate so that they can continue learning.
Another teacher said that students have enjoyed learning about and using the calm corner manipulatives. Students are invited to use this space when they have big feelings, such as being sad, mad, frustrated, or even excited. They have been taught how to set a timer and to use the tools provided to regulate their bodies. Students have responded well to this area and can use it independently. I have noticed students choosing this area unprompted by me when they are feeling their feelings, and they return ready to learn. It is a wonderful classroom option to help them learn to notice when they are feeling off, but to, and but to remain in the classroom in order to quickly transition back to the group.
And then the last comment is one of our favorites. The calm corner worked with several, several students who missed their mom. They went to the corner and used the wand as well as the breathing cards to feel better. The comfy chair is nice to have in the space and a spot for them to sit. I've also added a stuffed animal. They enjoy watching the wand and the animal to cuddle with. The calm corner is a nice addition to the classroom and a valuable tool to go along with second step and responsive classroom. Thank you, and one of the greatest opportunities, just to see as you're walking around the building and students using this as a resource and a tool, is like the comment said, the ability for them to rejoin their classroom as quickly as possible. And so, really, a lot of the research that this team has done is around helping support students work through those challenges, because we all know those challenges come. And so, we're excited to continue. We've been, this entire year, presenting new tools at each of our staff meetings. So, each month, we roll out a few more tools. Our team shares the strategies and the structure around that, and then we have a box that is in each of our rooms, and then teachers have the ability to keep adding that piece, or maybe take a couple of things out, add a new piece in, or maybe that group isn't ready yet for that material, so we'll have that the next month. But that's a fully adapted practice that we have at Westwood. So, you saw just a few of those pictures, but in each of our classrooms, there's a version of that piece. So, the other piece that was really thoughtful from our team was around all of the spaces in our building, so that's our specialist, and that's a piece of the, every area that we have, so students know that space is available, and they know the tools and supports that are there that they can use at any time during their day. And then, we've just had a lot of great success. You heard some of those teacher comments, and I've just been able to see the faces of students specifically, and the opportunities that they've been able to work through. And then, we recently submitted an additional grant to Prairie Care to build some additional regulation pieces, because the work certainly isn't done. The opportunities are just starting. So, just from the Westwood community, we appreciate all of that opportunity that this team has done to help us learn and grow and work through all of those pieces. So, thank you for your time. We appreciate you kind of testing out some of the materials, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Is there opport...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Lisa.
Up to any questions, Jeffs? Director Olsted?
Sorry. I didn't mean to talk over. So, this is in every classroom at Westwood? Okay. Is there opportunities to expand this to, I mean, I know there's kind of iterations of this in other elementary schools in particular. Is this through the same grant? Is this through a variety of sources, or...
This is actually an elementary strategy that we're trying to have consistent support and practices across, again, every school, every classroom will look slightly different, but all have the base manipulative boxes and setups, so they have, start with something, and then based upon what the teacher knows about their students, they would maybe customize some of the options for their students to engage in that they are finding that works well. So, yeah, we are trying to have that consistently to really support our RC work at the elementary level.
That's great.
Mm-hmm.
That's wonderful. I was just going to ask, how much was the original grant for? Remember?
Seven thousand five hundred.
Oh, wow. That's incredible. I mean, with the rise in neurodiverse students, it's really incredible, so thank you for doing this.
Well, and our expert OT wanted, you know, to me, we've got some good tools, and I think, you know, they're going to last. The tools that we're getting are going to last, so.
Quality control.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
Might have lost a few tonight.
Might be. They're good for adults, too.
Yeah.
Director Bullion?
I have a question for you. I, thank you for sharing all of that. I think that those spaces for students are probably well-received teachers and students. My question is kind of, being that it's an elementary school, when a student sees another student or a fellow classmate going into the space, how is that working with, is it, how do you keep that from maybe being disruptive? Because when, if I were to go to a corner with, with, you know, I'm just wondering how, how is that handled so that, you know, it doesn't distract or detract from the classroom space?
I know one of the teacher comments was being able to say how they rolled that piece out, and so that really has been systematic with the learning for us as a staff community. So, we're teaching each other how to roll that piece out, so then it's that conversation that we have with students, so really normalizing that piece to be, this is another support that we have in our classroom, just like we do with our responsive classroom strategies. So, that really is in the teaching and the front-loading of that piece, but then it's also monitored throughout all of that piece, and I've, I've watched that interaction go really smoothly from that aspect, because that was a key and concern for students to feel like they could use that piece, and then being able to realize we all work through and have different strategies that sometimes work, and it's been great. I've, I've heard students saying, oh, yeah, he, you know, or she needs to have that, and then they're going to come back. And so, it's been really thoughtful, and again, to the credit of the team to really lay that piece out. It wasn't just, hey, let's write this grant, let's get a whole bunch of really great things, and put them in all the classrooms, and good luck. It's been really systematic to say, how do we use this tool? How do we introduce that? How do we help support students to use that? And then ask those questions. So, we've had continued conversations around some of those things, too, and work that together.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. I think it's fantastic that the students are learning at such a young age how to identify dysregulation and how to control that and manage that. That is a lifelong skill. So, thank you.
Yes.
Along with that, we wanted to offer a variety of different tools and allow the students to explore those tools, because everybody calms down and regulates differently, and what, maybe the breathing board would work for the student, but the puppy works for the other student. And so, I think that going along the lifespan, they'll know what kind of works, does deep breathing work for me? Does just drawing work for me? And they can take those skills.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
I have this back.
He just gets to dodge the photo.
Right, right.
That's perfect. I like it so much. Thank you.
I'll put it over here for you.
It's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is the Laker Pride for this evening. Chair Franz.
Thank you. Moving on to personal items, I'm going to hand this over to Director Herman to talk about the approval resolution for the employment termination of certain district employees.
Chair Franz, members of the board, we're bringing forward to you the termination of employment agreement for the administrative cuts that we proposed and received your approval to move forward with. So, this is the official action for the termination of those two contracts.
I'm going to ask for a motion in a second.
So made.
Director Crosby?
Second.
And a second by Director Bullion. All right, open to discussion, questions? Hearing none. Would you like to go directly to a vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is a resolution. Roll call vote. Director Atkinson?
Aye.
Director Velazquez?
Aye.
Director Bullion?
Aye.
Director Burnick?
Aye.
Director Crosby?
Aye.
Director Olsted?
Aye.
An aye, so that passes 7-0. All right, moving on to unfinished business, we're going to go first to the item that was pulled off of the consent agenda, and that is the purchase orders above $25,000. So, Director Fredrickson?
Thank you Chair Franz, Board Directors, Superintendent Thomas. The invoice that you asked to pull, or pulled off of the consent agenda, was a quarterly invoice for Southwest Metro. We have students that attend Southwest Metro. This particular invoice is for those students that are blind or visually impaired. Because our district is as small as it is, we don't have full-time teachers for, there's a blind visual impairment teacher, an orientation and mobility specialist for blind visually impaired students, and an audiologist that we're unable to employ full-time. And Southwest Metro can hire full-time staff because they contract with all of their member districts for the services. So, this is a quarterly invoice for those services that we have our students attending Southwest Metro for.
Questions?
No, thank you for explaining that. So, the students actually go to Southwest Metro to, for these services, is that correct?
Correct. We are a member.
Can I correct that?
Oh.
Sorry. This, she had everything right except for the students don't go to Southwest Metro. So, these are students that we have in district that need either orientation, mobility, blind visual impairment, or audiology services here. So, those three employees come into our district to provide those services.
And this is the compensation for their...
Yep.
For their portion of the, for their services, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for explaining that.
Questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? That passes 7-0. Okay, moving on to other items and new business, we have the enrollment update. There's no action required by the board, and I'm going to hand this over to Director Fredrickson.
Thank you Chair Franz. You have in the consent agenda the current updated enrollment through March 1st. We're currently at 8,609 students, which is actually three more than we ended the '22-'23 school year, but it is 20 less than we had on October 1st, which was the date of the official child count. If we look at the current enrollment for the '24-'25 school year, we have currently 8,449 students enrolled, and that was as of last Friday. So, it's about 160 students less than we currently have, and the biggest discrepancy in the number of fewer students is in kindergarten. So, we anticipate during the next few months and over the summer that we will get some more kindergarten enrollments. We will continue to watch that, because if we are going to get 200 fewer students than what we anticipated, then we'll have to look at adjusting our revenue and expense projections. But we're anticipating that we will catch up. We have in the last couple of years, we'll gain kindergarten students. But all the other grade levels are pretty consistent in what we're expecting.
Director Fredrickson, originally, you had mentioned, and just correct me if I'm wrong, please, that is the budget for '24 based on 8,700 students, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you for that update. Next on our agenda is the approval to conduct a Morris Leatherman survey. I'm going to hand that over to Dr. Thomas.
Yeah, thank you Chair Franz, Board Directors. This evening, bringing forward with you the conversation of going, partnering with Morris Leatherman, whom many of you are familiar with, but they have historically conducted a lot of our exit survey data and interviews, so we understand kind of what's top of mind for families who may be living in our district, who aren't choosing our district. Additionally, it is someone that we have historically used when we have wanted to gain a better understanding from our community with regards to what their tolerance would be for supporting ongoing operational levy, resource support for our district, and that is something that we've been having conversations about with a few of our study sessions. It's been a conversation that I've been sharing at our, at our staff meetings, as well as we gain a better understanding of where we are at financially in the long term, and just looking at enrollment and how enrollment has been fairly flat for many, many years, and slightly declining, that that's a bulk of our revenue. About 60% of our revenue comes from the state formula based upon enrollment, and so if that's not going to be our primary source for additional revenue for our basic operating, how else can we generate that? And some of that... And some of that obviously can be addressed by way of fees, et cetera. A variety of things that we can address, whether it's parking fees, activity fees, or things of that nature. But obviously, you can do the math that that's not going to generate the type of revenue that we would need to sustain our basic operations in the district. And so, similar to what we've done in the past, we would partner with Morris Leatherman to put together a comprehensive survey that our community would partake. And there would be questions gaining an understanding what our community would actually support or not support with regards to moving forward with any type of additional levy resources for programming services in the district. So, with that, I would just open it up for conversation with the board.
Okay, so before we go to that conversation, can I get a motion to approve?
So made.
By Director Atkinson?
Second.
Second by Director Velazquez. And open it up for questions?
I would just like to ask. I know in the past Christie's explained that it's telephone interviews, that sort of thing. I saw on there, it says that it would be completed and brought to the board by the 8th of April. Just curious where spring break falls in there? And if our families are traveling that first week, does it give us an accurate enough time to get enough data?
So, our plan, you know, if this is something that the board would approve this for tonight, we would have between now and before spring break to get a window of survey and phone banking. And again, they're not calling every single one of our families. There's a representative sample that they shoot for. And this is something that when we spoke with Peter, he is confident that he and his team can get through that and deliver an analysis for us by the April 8th board meeting. If that is something that we are finding to be a challenge in terms of date, I guess we could look at revising some of that and bringing that forward to you in the April study session versus the business meeting as well. So, but they were confident that that would give us the window.
Piggybacking on Director Burnick's question. What is the typical sample size that they shoot to receive information from? And I had another part of that question. Oh, how long is the survey typically open? Is it usually like a one-week or a 10-day window for them?
Yeah, typically, it's about a 10-day window that we've had. And in terms of our overall N, I don't have that information with me as to what they would calculate for our district. Director Musman, by chance, do you happen to recall what Peter might have said?
I'm wondering if they do like, you know, take the population size and do a percentage.
There is. I just don't recall that percentage of what they needed for that N sample size to be statistically valid.
Yeah, and after all the years they've done this, numbers don't stick in my head. But I do know they have a scientific equation that they get to with the sample size. And so, they'll just keep calling until they get to that. And they're diverse in their sample size.
Okay, thank you.
And is this just phone? Or is there opportunity for other means if necessary or warranted?
This is actually a phone bank to talk live. Very similar. Again, this is exact replica of our exit surveys as well. And it's that conversation and engagement that actually keeps someone through that whole dialogue through the end of that survey window or that survey time.
I have another question. Is there a... So, you shared that it's similar to the exit interviewing. Is there maybe a rhyme or reason to doing that type of survey for this type of questionnaire rather than something that someone would type in or fill in? How do they decide how they want to question the community?
Actually...
Probably their job.
Yeah, Peter has been doing this for 35 years and certainly has watched the market trends grow and change over those years based upon the types of questions that they're asking, ones that they know solicit the actual response or results that are meaningful to districts. We have been working with them, looking at some of the questions, gaining some knowledge of, oh, we might want to revise this word or this language for our district. So, it's not necessarily just a pure cookie cutter approach. But yes, he has a bank of questions, hundreds of questions. Obviously, not all are used, but they would be choosing some of those based upon the location, the demographics, you know, the needs of a district.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. How much does the survey cost?
Director Musman, do you have that number with you by chance?
We just got invoice for the... To start the survey is $13,000. And then we'll do the balance of completion of the survey after Peter's presented and analyzed the results.
So, my question is, is that I know we've used Studer for a lot of surveys in our district. And I'd like to understand why we wouldn't be using Studer since they're close to our district. And I believe they're under contract, if I'm not... Please correct me if I'm wrong. And what would be the difference and the advantage of using this for the cost?
Morris Leatherman, their niche in the market is to do professional survey specifically for levy and referenda for communities. That is their sole purpose of their existence. So, this is their specialty. This is not a specialty of Studer. Studer has data that we can certainly draw upon and correlate, but it's not a specialty area that is within the wheelhouse of Studer. We did have that conversation. But again, similar to our strap planning, that is something that they do. This is not some of the work that they actually do.
So, thank you for that. You know, just with budget cuts, obviously, we're concerned about any additional spends that we have here in our district. The other question I have is relates to the timing that Director Burnick brought up. So, with the core planning meeting on March 19th, I believe that's the next core planning meeting. My understanding is that we were having these strategic planning meetings to get feedback on the community. And then we would have the core planning meeting to pull all that data together to really understand what the needs are, what the feedback was for the community. Wouldn't our survey then go out and incorporate questions based out of those core planning meetings? So that, you know, because I guess... I'm thinking about levies that have been done in the past. And I think one of the things that we've been criticized for is not having a clear understanding of what we're asking for. And so, how are we going to have a clear understanding of what we're asking for if we haven't had those core... That core planning meeting?
Well, it's a both and. And so, we're asking questions with Morris Leatherman that are going to be tied directly to tax correlation as well. What we're asking around strategic planning are more strategy, vision kind of questions, not granular programmatic questions. Again, strap planning stays at 30,000 feet. This kind of questioning is going to get fairly granular, again, based upon their expertise in the industry. This is information that they are going around literally all over the state and in other parts of our country, quite frankly, and asking these types of questions for this very specific purpose around referendum and levies, which is a different kind of ask of questioning versus the open 30,000-foot strategy engagement sessions that we've been having. So, again, we'll have data that can be triangulated in... For different purposes. But in exclusive of what we have currently, it's not going to get to the type of questioning that you typically will be asking when you're going out, trying to better understand should be engage our community around a levy or not versus a strategic planning engagement. It's fundamentally different types of engagement.
And I appreciate that. And how would they know of what type of levy we'd be asking for, though? I mean, you know, in the past, it was a tech levy. I know that just from our last retreat, there's many different types of levies that we could go out. So, I think it's really important to have a clear understanding of what we're asking our community because that will dictate what they're going to support.
Right, so again, what we're going...
Or whether or not they're going to support it.
Yes, thank you, Director Atkinson. What we're asking in this, again, it's granular programmatic support. That will gauge what type of levy we would want to go to the community with. So, this is not going to the community at this point with a specific ask and question. So, for example, and again, I'm just being hypothetical. If we hear a lot of responses come back around safety and security, that might encourage us to possibly look at not just an operational levy, but perhaps a safety and security levy separate from an operating levy. If we hear something about technology or something like that. So, all those specific levies that we just shared with you all last week, if some of that surfaces and Peter's group is saying, hey, we're hearing this pretty loud and clear, that will... That's the kind of information that we'll be bringing back to you all in April to say, here's what we heard. Here are the dominant themes that we heard from a programmatic desire. Here's where the community is saying they'd be willing to support. Here's where it doesn't appear to be a lot of support at all. And here's the type of support you might want to package that into if you're going to go forward with a levy. So, all of that will be coming into the April results conversation. So, to get to that, to get to more of those answers.
Essentially, what we've done before, it's a tax tolerance levy. And the questions that go out, if you've ever been part of this, because I have been, they want to know where your threshold is. Would you be willing to... If you're willing to increase your taxes, what would it be for? So, there's a lot of open-ended questions in the phone bank calling. And they kind of pivot according to your answer to trying to get a little bit more granular when you do go... When you do participate in the phone bank. That information gets... In the previous years, that information gets aggregated. And per the tax tolerance, they basically say, well, you know, the community is willing to pay for this, but not this. And the community is leaning towards this, which helps then, you know, basically inform what we do in the levy. If we go for a levy, and if we go for a levy at all, for that matter.
Well, that's also going to ask, is there a question that basically says, would you support it, yes or no?
That will come later. We'll find out as well. So, if the tolerance is really low overall, then yes, I think that's the conversation with the board to say, it doesn't appear that there's an appetite for this conversation. So, you all would make that decision to hold back? Or you would make that decision to move forward? But you would know that, I think, after this engagement as well.
Yeah, I think given the timing, I personally would like to see it presented in a study session format so that we can have more of a discussion and review the data versus going straight to vote in that April meeting. I also think that would give families more time, like given the timing of spring break. And I would assume that we're not just surveying families, but we're also surveying community members as well, anybody in our taxpaying community. Is that correct?
There'd be both.
But the survey would just be for taxpayers?
Correct.
Is that correct?
By the way, we're not voting on it. They're just giving us the information. Then the sooner we get the information, the more we can... We've done this before. The sooner you get the information, the more you can use that information, let's say, in the next study session discussion and all that. So, only thing they would presenting is the results during the board meeting, not any action by the board.
That is correct.
It kind of brings up another question for me, if you don't mind me jumping in.
Oh, yeah, I just... The board... Give me one second, I apologize. It just does say... So, can you clarify this, Chair Franz? It says, "A tax tolerance survey that would be completed and brought to the board to approve on April 9th." So, if you could just get clarification on that. That's the part that I was a little bit confused on, I apologize.
Tonight, we're going to approve whether we're going to go forward with this. That's so we are going to... It's approval to conduct the Morris Leatherman survey.
Correct, I'm clear on that.
I think the language here is... The way it's been described is that basically, they're bringing it... They're bringing the results on April 8th, but we don't actually approve the results. It's more or less a presentation on the results.
That's what I was confused by. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, that's the way it's done before. I think there's a little confusion in that. We don't actually approve the results. We accept them and use them in other conversations to build upon our ongoing discussion.
Is there a date that we would need to... If we had community support and we wanted to move forward hypothetically, what is the date for that?
So, I would say we would definitely need to have that discussion in April so that we can spend time with Morris Leatherman to have questions ready and formulated to be released in May. And again, if the board is not at a point where you feel as though you want to move forward, then the conversation stops. If this is something that you see, yep, you have data to support the conversation, we can talk with Peter and his team to see at what's the outset. I know that when we had conversations with him, we were just using these dates as our next business meetings, kind of back mapping. So, we could certainly talk with him and say, yep, we would like to go until April 12th or whatever that date... Whatever the next date in April is for the study session and then see what that means in terms of our ability to get that specific question if that's where we continue to grow towards.
Okay.
Yeah, so my question was going to be, if we just kind of play this out, we get the results back. Is there going to be an opportunity to basically reflect that back to the community to say, here's what we heard in the survey. Here's what we understood to be true. Does this... What we're proposing or whatever that next step is, does this accurately depict what you as a body have told us is important to you and where your values lie?
That's what our meeting with Peter and his team would be as we share those results from the survey. That would be the presentation to the board. It would be... Yeah.
Yeah, so my question is more about to the community. Are there going to be additional opportunities to send that back?
No, that would be the presentation to the community, reflecting that back. I mean, unless you all have done it differently in the past. But typically, Peter and his team will come back. They will share those results with the board, i.e., the community as well. And then you all would make determinations based upon what you learned from that tolerance to say, yes, there's tolerance to move ahead with this conversation, or no, there's not. But we wouldn't have time to go through multiple community engagement sessions if that's what you're... If I understand your question.
I'd like to piggyback because I understand where you're going with this. And the way, like, let's say we did the tech levy in particular is that the tax tolerance levy went out. Basically, the overall appetite for this. And then from the feedback from there, then the board discussed, you know, and we had several meetings on what exactly we would be saying we were going to do with the money and what was going... What we were going to send out to the community. And so, after we synthesized the information from Morris Leatherman, we did have other surveys and community meetings to kind of play out the scenario a little bit.
Yes.
Yeah.
If that's what you're asking, that is some of the work that we would be building into that. But I thought you meant like taking this out and sharing it with smaller groups versus building out something with smaller groups.
It would be building out something.
Sorry, I misunderstood your question.
No worries. Thank you.
And then can I just get clarification? So, are you saying that Studer... This is something Studer can't do so that in order to save money?
This isn't... Yeah, they are not experts in this arena like Morris Leatherman is. This is their expertise.
And Christie, I don't believe this is part of their current agreement either, right? We didn't build this service in, so it's not like we already paid for it.
Correct, in this contract, we would actually have to... You know, if this were something that was an expertise for them, we would have to add this in. We've already augmented the contract to accommodate the strategic plan to make that cost neutral. We don't have the bandwidth within the budget currently to take off more because then we're going to start losing our original intent of our partnership with Studer.
Thank you. So, which budget does this come out of then? Is that your superintendent budget? Is it communications?
Between both.
Split between both?
That was currently in our budget for this year.
Director Frederickson, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do usually budget for some Morris Leatherman something every year, and it is split between the two UFRS accounting codes.
We actually do this every other year?
Oh, every other year?
Yeah, we always have this on the books every other year and have a set bank of questions that we've asked historically going back probably a couple of decades. So, we've got good benchmark data on some of those questions. And then depending on the year, we'll add additional questions. In this case, you know, levy questions.
Morris Leatherman did present at the Minnesota School Board Association under the referendum area. He spoke at length about the changing questions that they determined as the demographics and as different feedback that they normalize throughout the state. So, I assume that he's going to be, again, pulling his expertise and not just going from our standard long-time bank of questions.
Yeah, they have scientifically tested questions that they incorporate.
Okay.
And this is the same company that presented last fall, I believe, to us as well?
Correct, correct, yeah. And I think that's a key piece here, going back to that Studer thing. And I think that's a key piece here, going back to that Studer thing, like, they have decades of research, this is what they do, and even within our own, we can draw upon those patterns that we've seen changing in our community, they know our community through a data lens, a deep data lens, so I think, again, you all ultimately make that decision to continue the conversation moving forward or not, and either way, you're going to have, and we will have, an enriching dataset to inform a lot of our practices, and to Director Atkinson's point, that we can triangulate with other efforts, strategic planning, et cetera, as well.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, that passes seven-zero. Next is the discussion and approval of the 24-25 school board meeting dates, they are included in your board packet, they do follow the standard first Monday of, or the second Monday of every month being the board meeting, and the fourth Monday being the study session, and normally in July, which is of course always subject to change, we only, we only have one regular meeting and no study session. But again, the board meetings are fluid, I just want to remind people of that, and these are placeholders, if anything, at any one time we could add, especially if we do decide to go on to a levy referendum, and in other years, we have had multiple meetings associated with those, with approval from the board and making sure we can get a quorum. So, I'm going to take a motion to approve.
So made.
By Director Bullion.
Second?
Second by Director Burnick. Okay, any questions?
I have a couple of questions. For the July 8th date, that's coming off of the Fourth of July holiday, and with the Fourth being so close to the Eighth, I'm wondering if we could potentially move that to July 15th? And then, with the September TBD board retreat, as a board, we have not discussed the content of what that retreat would be, so I think it's important to have that discussion come before the board, and so not knowing, you know, what that is, of course, just questioning whether we need to have that on there or not. And then, October 14th is Columbus Day, as well as MEA Holiday Week, so I'm wondering if we could move that to 10/7? And those are, and then just noting that November 11th is Veterans Day, but that didn't, I mean, I think we've had meetings on that day in the past, so. I think the biggest concerns I had was the July 8th, because it's so close to the Fourth of July holiday, and then the October 14th being that it's right during MEA break, moving that to October 7th.
A couple of things, first of all, we have the September board retreat as TBD, there's no date on that, we had already spoken of doing an October deep dive academic, so that is basically a placeholder, because we don't really have an October date, and we will be sending out questions or a survey of what date in October that would entail, and if somebody had another, as usual, if anybody had any other suggestions to do, instead of the academic deep dive based upon this year's MCAs, which would be ready by then, as well as, I believe, the first round of the Fast Bridge, which would be ready, because we wanted to wait till October for that, as we discussed, and the study session also. So, right now, that is just a placeholder, but we had already sent out a written notice saying October would be the preferred time, but we don't actually have a date for October, because we haven't sent out a survey for that. If you have other suggestions that you'd rather do at the October retreat, we're, please send them in, but that's kind of what we have tentative, so what we have here for September is a TBD. The one thing that I will say is the July 8th regular meeting, if we don't have a quorum, we can always move that, because that is the first, or the second Monday, I'm sorry, in July. However, if we do go for, like I stated, if we do decide to go for a levy or referendum, I think we can all assume that July will be fairly robust with meetings, both study sessions, usually just additional study sessions. So, I think that that, what date and what we do in July is really going to be heavily dependent on what the board decides to do, based upon the Morris Leatherman survey, and if anyone has any comments, or if you'd like to change that, or just leave it as tentative, that's, that's fine. As far as the dates that end up on veterans or other holidays, typically, as we did this year, we voted on whether we're still going to meet despite the fact that it's a holiday.
I don't, I don't have a strong opinion, I mean, I think as dates get closer, we can look at rescheduling too, but if we wanted to, you know, if people already know they're going to be gone in July, push it to the 15th and...
Doesn't matter.
Yeah. The MEA one, I'd maybe wait, see where we're at, you know, but, but if people feel strongly, I mean...
I don't have a strong opinion. So, the only thing that, historically, when we've had things like anything from changing boundaries of elementary, or referendums or levies, then July, August, and September are pretty open, and as we get closer in July, we probably should send out a survey to see who's available when, making sure we have a quorum, and also determining how many meetings we actually need.
Yeah, I think that's why I'm bringing it to our attention early tonight, because that's what we're here for the discussion for, rather than we'll wait and see, we're here to approve the dates. Regarding the July 8th date, if you did, you know, mention that there is going to be more discussion about a levy, I think picking a date where more of our community will be available to attend is also important, because it's not just about us board members sitting here this evening and what our schedules determine, it is also about the needs of our community, and so that's, being so close to the Fourth of July holiday, that was my concern, and I would recommend moving it to the 15th, that's my recommendation.
I'm recommending to the board that we actually have this discussion in June, based upon what we decide to do, and then set a whole set of meetings up in July and August, and make sure as many people as possible can show up, and just leaving this as a placeholder for now, because if we move it out to July 15th, and we decide we need three or four meetings in July, or something like that, then our first meeting that starts in the middle of the month may be a little off, is that okay, if we?
No, I mean, I personally, we all have schedules, work schedules, travel schedules, I think we're here to discuss the dates this evening, and I'd like to walk away knowing what dates I need to plunk on my calendar to prioritize. I mean, what this would mean for perhaps any board director is, are you taking a Fourth of July vacation or not, to be honest with you, for those of us that do travel? I mean, this is not just about me, but I'm saying it's four days from a Fourth of July major American holiday, so I'm just recommending moving it to the 15th, and if, if the board doesn't feel that way, that's fine, then we can leave it as the 8th, so.
Members of the board, may I please interject, I apologize. Based off of the timeline for getting requirements into the paper, should we move forward with a referendum, we will recommend that we stick with the July 8th timeline to allow for that approval to happen, in order for those newspaper filings to be done in time before the July 30th deadline, so that is one thing to take in consideration if we're moving it away from July 8th.
What is, I'm sorry, what is?
For the school board filing dates, that we have to, we have to get certain...
Or the election filing dates?
Newspaper filings completed.
Gotcha. I think that's fine, and then if, if we don't move forward, then we can consider another date, or maybe, maybe we only do that business on the 8th and have, you know, if we're looking at doing a referendum, then we're going to have a few meetings in the summer.
You know, but in consideration of summer schedules and things like that, I think maybe we should send out a survey of the board to see who's available when and where, to make sure that we always have a quorum on some dates, and so if we do go for a referendum, we might as well just ask now what dates people are going to be gone, to make sure that we do have that quorum, because we're probably going to need a study session that month too, if not more than one.
Yeah, I think we can wait till after April 8th, so, you know, I mean, at this point, we don't really know what it's going to look like.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, yeah, because I would personally be gone the week of the 1st through the 4th, like, I mean, we don't all have to talk about our schedules, but it's hard to sit here and tell everybody in the community when I'm gone, I don't think that's done in general for me, to be honest with you, it's my own personal time, hope everyone's okay with that.
So, we'll just, we'll wait till our decision, or what we find out from the April 8th, and then do a survey of who's going to be available when, on the schedule going forward.
But we can approve the schedule today.
Yes, and unless, well, we can approve the schedule at the September TBD, even for the board retreat, since we don't really have a date in October yet, and so we'll just go ahead, and as soon as we get that date in October, then we'll go ahead and make that change, and put that in the schedule and send out a notice, is that okay?
So, September will become October?
Most likely, yes. That's what we've talked about so far.
Okay.
It's not set in stone, though.
Chair Franz, if I may, just, just make sure I'm tracking, so, you'll, the board is going to approve the calendar tonight, knowing that things may be in flux based upon the conversation tonight, but similar in the past, when you've changed a board meeting, you've polled the board, you all have made determinations as to switching a date, then we, Martha, would then change that into the calendars, and I just want to know now if that's still the protocol, because obviously, we're doing the same with our respective teams, to make sure that we have the right people here for the conversations, to knowing that this is approved, there will be potentially some changes, as there have been every year, and we'll use that same process that you've had to change board dates.
Yes, that is correct, we're going to be using the same protocol that we have used before.
All right, got it, thank you.
Okay. All right, so can I, I've already gotten approval, can I get a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes seven-zero. And, next thing on the agenda is the discussion of policy. So, we discussed all these policies at the study session, so why don't, how do you want to go about doing this, start off one at a time? Has everyone reviewed the changes that we agreed upon in the study session? Do you want to vote them all in at once? Anybody have any ideas?
I can vote on them all at once, but...
Okay.
Do they also have anything they want to pull up?
Be good with voting on them as one group?
I am, we walked through the changes at the last meeting, so I'm, I was comfortable with the changes that were made.
Okay, so, first of all, I have to ask for an approval, so can I get a motion?
So made.
By Director Crosby, second?
Second.
By Director Velazquez. And so, I'm going to ask for a vote on Policy 505, 506, 513, 532, 601.1, 603, 603.1, 611, 612, and 612.1, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, that passes seven-zero. And next, we have administrative reports, so I'm going to hand this over to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, just a really quick strategic plan update, we are, we've completed our initial round of discussions with our community on four big questions, and then next week, we'll convene as a core planning team to synthesize a lot of that data and start putting things into themes that will help shape and guide what our second round of engagement with the community will look like, going deeper on some of the themes as they emerge, so that process starts on the 19th.
Administrative reports.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, members of the board, we just wanted to keep it on everyone's radar, that we're still working through all the process to adjust and realign our resources as best we possibly can, so keeping that at the forefront, this work that's still being done by all the administrators, and getting staff and feedback from all the community, as well as we're working through those steps. We don't have anything new to present for you tonight, but just to keep it on everyone's radar, that is what we're working through at this time.
And I have one update, after, what, three years, three and a half years, we finally have a settlement on our construction lawsuit, we finally got an agreement last Friday, Thursday, that we're going to ask the board to sign off on tonight.
You're going to ask the board to sign off on the construction lawsuit results tonight?
Yes, we just need a signature on it, it's been settled.
Okay, okay, but we don't need a vote or anything like that, right?
Nope, we just need a signature on it.
Okay, that's great news. Any other administrative reports? Okay, so, board reports, Director Thomas, oh, board reports, I'm going to start with all the board members first, and then I'll end. Anybody have any board reports?
Yes. I wanted to, a reminder, oh goodness, can't hear me, a reminder to our community for the coffee and community conversations tomorrow night, maybe decaf coffee, since it's at night, 5:30 to 7:30 at McCall Pond, our topic for tomorrow night is refugees, and there's a panel discussion, it should be very, very meaningful, I'm looking forward to it, so that's a reminder for that. And then, I attended in, for Amy, the ECFE parent advisory meeting, and we talked about the strategic plan and the process, and spent a lot of time brainstorming for the 50th anniversary for ESFE, which we've, ECFE, good grief, that we've talked about before here tonight, but it was really fun to brainstorm with the, with the team, and that'll be coming in the fall, so if anybody has any ideas for the 50th anniversary, I'm sure they are all ears, and, yeah, that's it, thank you.
Any other board reports?
I have, thank you, Director Alstead, for attending for me, really appreciate that. I have attended an officer's workshop through MSBA, so I've had, in the last week, I've had, or week and a half probably, six hours of legal and practical training and instruction, and MSBA really does a great job with their trainings. One of the things that, I'll just share a little takeaway, one of the things that they shared, or a tidbit, was that every agenda item to be tied to the strategic plan, and we maybe already do that, but how they presented it, and I think it was probably a board member from another district shared that, but I just thought, oh, I like that, especially since we're going through our strategic plan process right now, so, again, just really appreciate MSBA, how, how well they put together their trainings.
Great. Anybody else? Okay, so, the first thing that I wanted to do is point out again about the district retirements, we have a tremendous amount of experience leaving our school district with wonderful memories of people that have many, many years of service, and so I wanted to point out that we are honoring them, and they will also be honored at a district retirement celebration on May 16th at Prior Lake High School from 3:30 to 5:00 p.m. In the absence of our student rep, Dan Bergen, he did provide a student council summary that he would like me to state, and this is his language, so he, despite the fact that he was missing tonight to be at a band concert, he did take the time to write a summary for us, so this is his words, so the development committee for the student council is working on getting period products in the bathrooms, and that fundraising is organizing a bake sale to raise money for the families of the police officers, Matthew Ruggie and Paul Elmstrad, and the firefighter, paramedic, Adam Finseth, and the community service is organizing a feed of, organizing something for Feed My Starving Children for the student council on March 27th. The student council exec team is also looking for a time to meet with the activities group to start getting the spring events on the calendar, and there's also numerous other fun events to look forward to as spring sets in on the student council website, and so he thanks us for the opportunity to bring this to everyone's attention. The other thing that I want to add is, we had a closed session at last month's board meeting, our last regular board meeting, we closed the session... We closed the session to do a mid-year summary report, or summary review of Dr. Thomas. As a reminder, the school board only has one employee, and that is the superintendent, Dr. Thomas. And this year, per the changes that were discussed and approved by the board, we had a new MSBA standard review format. So in the effort to eliminate surprises at the end of the year, and to give Dr. Thomas a mid-year review, everyone on the board filled out a, filled out a mid-year review via the link. And we met in closed session. The first thing that the board talked about was that the new format of the MSBA standard, standard questions were a little bit different than what we had reviewed in the previous years. And we wanted to make sure that everyone was understanding, interpreting the questions the same way, to make sure that the assimilated result of our mid-year review was understandable, and everybody was kind of coming from the same page. And then after that, we talked about two different areas that we summarized as a board. One was the areas of strength, and the other one was areas of continued development, or things that we would like to see continued moving forward to become an area of strength. And that's about it. Everything else is what we, what we encourage each individual board member to do is to actually meet with Dr. Thomas about their individual assessment, since we only looked at the summarized assessment of all board members. And please provide feedback and discuss whatever it is that you did put on your area of, or basically your review. And that is about it. Future events, as was already stated on March, well, not already stated, I guess, March 23rd, we have the Strategic Plan Community Cafe at McCall Pond from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. And that is where we invite the community to come and give feedback on our, on our strategic plan. And then our next school board study session will be on March 25th. And then we have our last, I believe it's our last. One more, okay. So our last for March, Strategic Plan Community Cafe, and that will be held at Club Prior from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. And with that, I'm going to ask for approval, a motion to close the meeting, and we will be going into, I mean, to close this business meeting and go, and transition into a closed meeting. Can I have a motion?
So made.
Second.
Okay, by Director Bullion and Director Velasquez, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this meeting is closed, and we're going to be taking a short recess to transition into a closed meeting.